Oh, no, I don't. I don't. Only.
Neither do I.
Well, actually, no, Eric. But Eric's been here for like twenty years.
They, um, they kept that two years ago.
And so this is part of the city cats?
We're going to do that.
Take it. Oh, yeah.
Okay, we're good?
Uh, Stacy won't be able to make it.
So, um, Paul, are you the vice chair?
There's.
Yeah.
Do you want to call the meeting board?
We get the right size later on.
Hey, is this Tate?
It is.
Yep.
Oh, you know what I'm calling.
Yeah, um. Okay, welcome to the public planning board meeting. January. Just here for legal training tonight. No, okay, so we're good?
Sure. Well, welcome. I'm Sally Daggett. I'm at the lawyer at the Jensen Bear Law Firm in Portland and serve as a city attorney. I was asked to come and provide sort of an annual training for you all. I know we did one a year ago and we're doing another one. And we're kind of covering some of the same ground because I think sometimes repetition. Do I need to, oh, move the mic? I'm sorry. Repetition helps you all to remember things. So hopefully everybody has two handouts. There's one that's called Administrative Board Decision Making Workshop and has today's date on it, has my name on the front cover. And then there's a second handout, which is something that I just recently saw in all the municipal work we do, but it's a seminar presentation from the Colorado Municipal League, one of their conferences, called Land Use Liability and the Basics of Quasi Judicial Decision Making. And so it goes into a lot of the real specifics and I think it's really on point on a lot of issues that I think you all come across, you know, every meeting, every application. So I thought this would be a good resource for you, but we're also going to walk through maybe some of the specifics in there as well. So this is meant to be your workshop. I know we're starting here at six oh four P M. I think it's been scheduled for two hours, but I want you to ask questions along the way because I want this to be, I don't want this to be Sally droning on for two hours and, you know, it gets to be eight o'clock and you're all, you know, ready to go to bed. So with that, just to go over the written materials that have my name on the front page, this Administrative Board Decision Making. This is meant to be a resource. I know some of you good doobies even had your ones from last year. There have been a couple of updates, but nothing too significant, mostly to change up in, starts on page twenty-nine, the Frequently Asked Freedom of Access Act questions because there have been some changes in state laws since we met a year ago. And so the items that are new for 2024 that actually took effect in 2023, but they're highlighted in yellow. So that's something that you ought to just take a look at if you were on the board a year ago and want to know what the changes are. The other thing, I provided a slightly more updated and relevant sample set of opening remarks for the planning board chair to read. I don't know if you already have a set of remarks that the chair reads every meeting, but we advise all of our municipal boards and committees, especially ones that sit in a quasi judicial capacity, to have a set of opening remarks that the chair reads at the outset of the meeting just so that everyone knows what the rules of the road are because there are lots of folks that come to these meetings and they've never been to a planning board meeting and they don't know how it's supposed to work, you know, how do they ask questions? When is it their turn to speak? You know, is it ever their turn to speak, that type of thing? So I think a set of opening remarks is a really good idea. So this has been updated. I think the ones last year were a different sample. But again, this is something that can be tweaked by you all to make it most relevant to your meetings and what you think is the most important information that, you know, people in the audience who, if they're first time participants in an Auburn Planning Board meeting, what they need to know. And I think that helps set the stage for everybody, you know, because knowledge is power. So that's, those are the two probably newest things, but, um, yes.
Oh, forty-four.
Page forty-four?
Yes.
So do you want all of this read at the beginning of the meeting?
Mm-hmm. I think that's a very good idea. And I know whoever's the chair is going to say, this is boring and repetitive and we all know how this works, but it's not about you as planning, it's about making the process inclusive. So it's about the members of the public who are there for their very first and possibly their only planning board meeting. They ought to understand how you all operate. And it's great that you all know how you operate, but it's really, and that's, we're going to talk about some of my themes here on how to be a good administrative board, and that is to make the process inclusive. And part of that starts with, yes, it may seem really boring that you, the chair reads this speech at the beginning of each meeting, laying out how things are going to happen, but I think that's a really good foundation for letting people know how the Auburn Planning Board works. Yes, Riley, did you have a question or? Okay, okay.
We varied a lot on that over the years depending on the preference of the chair, but we've gone from the detailed script of the items. So the chair is sort of following that discussion to, um, other chairs will have to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And obviously, Eric, I can send this to you as a Word document and you all can, you know, tweak it as you, or the chair could tweak it as you see fit. Just, you know, again, it's meant to, just in as short of fashion as possible, let the newcomer know how things are going to proceed because especially, you know, people don't know where they're supposed to go. They want to, you know, make comments from the audience. They don't know that they have to go to lectern. They have to state their name and address.
Would this be helpful if we included this like after or before the minutes, like that's listed on the website or when, I was, when people come in to view the material for the upcoming meeting so they can read it? Or like have it posted on the table when you walk in where there's handouts?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could, quite frankly, make it as a handout and then if that, you know, instead of calling it opening remarks, you can, maybe you have a very more condensed version of opening remarks. Maybe it's the chair reading, letting people know that sort of how the meeting is going to proceed is available as a handout on the table, you know, by the door. Yeah, that's a sort of a more efficient, maybe possibly way to do it.
It's not going for it.
Yeah.
Ending or just.
But again.
But for newcomers, there would be, there's a note.
Right.
Grab it, read it.
Right. Yep, yep. No, that's a good idea. John, did you have a question?
Uh, no, just, just a comment that I put, you know, regarding, I want to order first because some of this is a little bit out of our order.
Yep. Okay, so big picture, there are two broad themes I want to cover for you tonight. One is about you as planning board members and, you know, making sure that you follow the right processes and procedures as planning board members in your decision making. And then the second part is a little more on effective public meetings, sort of things to be aware of and to make your meetings run efficiently and not get bogged down. Is there an issue with the audio or?
Focus a little bit more like so.
Oh.
Very clearly, but the rest of the places are not being heard very good. So maybe just pick up loudly when you might.
Okay. Okay, so two themes. One is good, what are good administrative board decision making practices? And then two, what are ways to effectively run your, your public meetings? So those are two of the themes for today. You have to understand as sort of, you know, board members, you have a position of public trust. You've been appointed by the city council. And so there are certain expectations of you serving on a Auburn board. And also there are certain expectations that the public has that, you know, that when they come in as applicants or as, you know, opposing neighbors to a project, that they're going to get a fair shake in front of you. And so that's an important theme for everything that you do is making sure that everything is above board and that the process is fair to everybody there. You also want to make sure, you know, that everything that you do is legal and that means, you know, knowing sort of the substantive law that includes, you know, the Freedom of Access Act, the, there may be some federal law that applies, but also you need to know your zoning ordinance. If you haven't, you know, as new members, sat down and read through chapter sixty, well, you need to. And you need to bring your ordinance with you, you know, to every meeting or have it available on your laptop at the meeting just so that you're able to quickly refer to the relevant, you know, ordinance that you're administering. There also, you need to be familiar with your policies and procedures. You'll see in your written materials, there are your current set of policies and procedures on page eleven of the written materials. And I think there are some pending amendments that maybe got prepared last year but never quite got adopted because they got bogged down on some of your agendas, but we'll talk about that as we have time. But you need to be familiar with your own policies and procedures as a good board member. So big picture, how to be a good board member. That all starts with understanding your role as a Auburn Planning Board member, which is predominantly what's known as a quasi judicial role. If you turn to page six of the handout, you'll see a nice chart put together by Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission that lays out on the left-hand side of the page is what it means to sit in a quasi judicial mode to, when you're basically on a case judging a pending application. And this is predominantly, you know, this is probably, the bulk, more than the majority of your work is done as a quasi judicial decision maker. And what that means is you are not to talk or email or text or communicate in other, whatever format is the latest and greatest as technology permits, to other board members, to the public. It also includes having multiple discussions with city staff about the merits of an application. And why is that? Because it's back to the, one of the fundamental principles of law that you need to understand as a planning board member is, and it's got its basis in both the federal constitution as well as the main constitution. And that is the due process clause of both the federal and the main constitution, that everybody is entitled to fundamental fairness. And so when you're sitting as, is in a quasi judicial mode as a, basically a judge on an application, you need to make sure that you're being fair to everyone involved. So if board members are talking to other board members or to applicants or to neighbors or city staff outside of the public meeting, then that is not fair to whoever's not present. You are obtaining information as a board member that everybody else is not privy to. And even the most innocuous question to, whether it's to John or Eric or Catherine about, you know, well, what about this section of the ordinance? And, you know, why doesn't that apply to, you know, this application? You know, Eric might give you, you know, an answer over the phone back to that question and Eric might be wrong. And you then, as a board member, A, you have information that the other board members don't have. And B, Eric might have given you the wrong answer and the, you know, whoever it is, the applicant or the opposing neighbors, they don't know that that colloquy has happened and so it can't ever be sort of corrected. So part of being, sitting in a quasi judicial capacity is not only you don't have any outside conversations, but it's most fundamentally, you must rely only on the information that you gain at your planning board public meetings. It's not you go out for coffee after the meeting or you chat, you know, while you're on, at Martindale golfing over the summer and you run into some of your fellow members or applicants. It's, you must be scrupulous about relying only on what is presented at the public meetings. Because you need to be, as a judge, fair and impartial. And we're going to talk a little bit more about conflicts of interest and bias and how those issues come up. But you really want to, again, be fair to everybody involved in this process. You can see also on the chart on page six that you only discuss waivers that you have authority to give. You have to be consistent in your interpretations, but at the same time, if you make a mistake, mistaken interpretation, you're allowed to correct a mistaken interpretation. You can't, you know, judge your decision on whether you like the project, you know, just as a gut sense. You like this project or don't like it. You have to, you know, have, apply the specific facts that are presented by the applicant and you have to apply the law to those facts. And so that's a very important, I guess, concept to keep in mind is that you need to be thinking, in every single thing you do as a planning board member, you need to be thinking about, is this fundamentally fair to everybody involved? And if you're doing something that isn't fair to everybody involved in the process, then it's probably, you probably shouldn't be doing it. There is, you can see on the right-hand side of the handout on page six, you know, what's different in a legislative mode where it might be okay to be having some conversations about some legislation, i.e. zoning ordinance amendments outside of the meeting, but I find it very, very difficult for planning board members to, they, they want to take the position that, okay, I can talk about proposed zoning ordinance amendments outside of the meeting with everybody and anybody because I'm, we're acting in a legislative mode and so the rules about, you know, fundamental fairness and no expiry communications and all that, you know, fundamental fairness stuff don't apply. Well, that's not really true. And I find it very hard for planning board members to, when they're talking about planning board business, to differentiate about, okay, well, this is a site plan application, so I have to be wearing my judge hat. But, oh, this is some proposed zoning ordinance amendments, so I can wear my legislator hat and do more sort of outside discussions of, you know, some proposed zoning ordinance amendments. And I would say the true legislative body is the city council. And so you're not, you're making a recommendation to the legislative body. So I don't think it would be fair to say that you yourselves are legislators. You're sort of, when you make a recommendation, you know, positive or negative on proposed zoning ordinance amendments, you're sort of part of the legislative process, but you're not the legislators themselves. So I, my recommendation would be, as planning board members, that you not try and in your mind, think about, well, is this the, is this a site plan application, a subdivision application, or is this zoning, proposed zoning ordinance amendments? And, and, you know, change your behavior based on whether you're sitting in the quasi judicial capacity setting or you're making recommendations to the city council on zoning ordinance amendments. Because I think it's just too hard for you to make that distinction. And even so, an argument can be made that if a planning board member is, you know, very much involved in expiry communications about proposed zoning ordinance amendments, it still doesn't really look that fair to the, to the, you know, whoever's proposing the zoning ordinance amendment. Because some of these zoning ordinance amendments are proposed by individual property owners. They're not just, some are of generally applicable, obviously, you know, applicability that applies, you know, to large neighborhoods, but some of them are only for a few parcels of land. So it just, it gets too much into like parsing, am I, my quasi judicial or my recommendation to the city council mode? And I just think the better practice is you don't engage in expiry communications or any of this stuff. You only rely on the information that comes forward at your planning board public meetings. And that way, everybody will have a better sense of, you know, that they're all, you're all getting the same information. And I think the, the, the public will have more trust in you if you are only relying on what you learn at the public meetings. So I want to stop there. Does anybody have questions on the whole quasi judicial versus sort of legislative capacity issue?
Not exactly on that, but on something you touched on. Are there instances where the planning board could do a site visit with proper public notice and the public's ability to be there as well?
Oh, absolutely. But the thing about site visits, number one, they, they're planning board meetings. They need to be conducted by the planning board as a board. It's not individual planning board members do the drive-by site visit. They have to be noticed as a meeting. You have to invite, you know, the applicant and the neighbors and whatever fashion you would invite them to your normal planning board meetings. And they can be ripe with opportunities for a lot of bad behavior to take place. So you want to engage in site visits sparingly. With technology, as far as, you know, videos and cameras, everybody has, be it, you know, aerial or street scene photography, there's a lot of information that can be presented to the planning board that doesn't involve the entire planning board member and staff and applicant and neighbors and all their consultants trooping out in the field to a particular site. So, but it is possible to have a site visit. I mean, how frequently does the Auburn Planning Board go on site visits?
I can only think of two times over the past eighteen years or so.
Okay.
One of them was.
Yeah.
Where our ordinance requires a site visit.
Yep.
Planning board?
Yep, yep. Yeah, I mean, and there, there are a couple of decisions of the Maine Supreme Court that, where site visits have gone bad. And so projects have, and that, you know, that keeps me gainfully employed, but there are a lot of, you know, planning board projects where the planning board may get, you know, applying the law to the facts right, but the process in getting there is not done properly. And that can undo a properly sort of, you know, reached planning board decision on the merits if the process is messed up. I mean, there are a lot of smaller communities where, you know, they don't have too many big planning board applications and they'll oftentimes, you know, have us come. And we're mostly there, you know, to help make sure the process gets done right. And, and then to, you know, to maybe guide on, you know, what ordinance provisions may or may not apply and how to apply the law to the facts. But, you know, I don't come, quite frankly, very often to Auburn because I think you have, you know, the procedures in place and you have excellent, you know, staff. A lot of smaller communities don't have that. But there's always, you know, it's some of these procedural things that can trip, whether it's, you know, the Portland or the Auburn or, you know, or the mine it, planning board up. It's, it can trip any planning board up. So.
Sally, can I interrupt real quick?
Sure.
To touch on what Eric just said, and this reminds me of the exact same topic we discussed about a year ago about, you know, sites that, that they're coming, that have been discussed or you can tell they're about to be discussed because you see stuff happening just as a normal citizen driving by and to avoid that. Correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is to use things like Google Maps as an asset and things like that versus onsite visits? Is that what, because you referred to internet technology and stuff like that. Is that what you're saying?
No, I am, I am not suggesting that you, as planning board members, should use Google Maps or, you know, Google Street View. And, and we're going to go into this more. As a quasi judicial body, you're sitting as judges. And so you're the judges, you're not the prosecutor or the, or the defense counsel. You are not doing investigations.
Let me give that some context.
Okay.
I think, because I, I'm asking for clarity because I've done it in meetings where we'll be presented with, with an application and the city does a really good job of, of bringing things up during the meeting on, on the monitor for everyone to look at, both board members and the public. But there'll be at times where questions will come up where that screen goes away. And I've used my own phone on Google Maps to kind of zoom in on the property in question just to have a better idea of comparing that to what's in the proposal for a property line so I can have a better visual feel of what people are talking about. Is that something that I should be shying away from or?
Yes.
Okay.
If you have a question about what, you know, the property looks like and you want to zoom on it, in on it, you ask the, the whole, the chair, you know, through the chair, could you have staff pull up on Google Maps the property? Because I want to zoom it so that, remember my theme about, everybody has to have the same information. And you looking on your phone at whatever it is, it seems innocuous enough, seems well intended, but the rest of your fellow board members don't have that same information and.
Everybody has access to Google Maps though, you know, what I'm just, it's something that's been on the screen.
Something that the rest of them haven't looked at. Yes, they may have access to it and yes, but there also may be people in the audience that don't have access to it, that don't, you know, so you, you need to, again, need to be scrupulous about only relying on information that you and everybody in the room at the planning board public meeting has access to and sees it. It's not fair for you, and again, as well intended as it may be, to look at Google Maps. So this happens for boards of assessment review. They go and look up property record cards or they think they're doing, being good doobies and researching recent sales of properties. All that is a huge no-no as a quasi judicial board member. I mean, you, you need to be scrupulous about, if there's something that you're relying on as a board member, you, and that's informing your thinking on an application, you need to be sharing that with the rest of the board. And this happens to, you know, you all live in town and you know certain properties. So an application may come in front of you and you may, may know the site quite well. And so you may be relying on some of that personal knowledge to, to help inform your opinion. And it's, you know, you don't, you're not supposed to live in a cave when you serve on the planning board in Auburn. You're allowed to rely on that personal knowledge. It's just, if you are relying on it in some fashion, you know, if Paul says, you know, I, I drive by this site every day on my way to work and I've observed whatever it is that, you know, there's, oh, I can see on the, you know, the front part of the property is really, really wet, you know, every spring. Paul needs to say that at the meeting just so that, and at a time when whether it's the applicant or the neighbors, they have a chance to respond to it. So it's not that, if you're relying on some information and you, you know, you've had your public hearing and you've closed the public hearing, so no more public comment, and then the board is deliberating and all of a sudden, you know, Tim, you bring up, oh, well, I've, you know, just looked at Google Maps and I've zoomed in on the property. I observed, you know, again, oh, it looks like there's, you know, some large wetland here that we haven't, you know, been aware of. You know, that's, at that point, you know, the, the applicant and the, and the neighbors, they're, they can't respond to that information. Because this is, this is actually based on a court case that's happened. It was in a tax abatement case. But it was a big issue in the court case about whether these two neighborhoods were the same for assessing purposes. It was, happened in Coastal Biddeford. And so the, the city and the taxpayer presented their case. And then the board adjourned the meeting to, and came back a few weeks later to deliberate. And in between, at the end of the public hearing and in between the deliberations, one of the board members went out and drove to Coastal Biddeford and to observe the neighborhoods, okay? And so he then came to the. And so he then came to the deliberations and on this key factual issue in the case, this board member said, oh, I went out and drove by the site and I think, you know, the neighborhoods are, you know, they're, they're not the same, they're different. And that was one of, that was like the heart of the case, whether these two coastal neighborhoods were the same. And so the board then, you know, voted and the taxpayer was able to successfully challenge that board's decision. Because of that board member's site visit, he brought in information during the deliberations that nobody had a chance to respond to. I mean, there is a way to cure that if it does happen, but it didn't happen in this particular court case. If that happens, I think it's incumbent on you all and it's not just incumbent on the chair. You all, because you've been to this training session, should, and staff too, should, the light bulbs should go on. Okay, wait a second. Something new just got introduced during the, our deliberations. Some new information that nobody's had a chance to respond to. You may need to reopen the public hearing and allow, you know, the applicant and the opposing neighbors, you know, the public to, you know, it doesn't have to, you're not reopening the whole, you know, application process. But at least on that specific issue, you need to let people comment on it. Otherwise, you know, and if the, if the planning board proceeds and doesn't reopen the public hearing and makes a decision that somehow based on that factual information, there's, you know, the likelihood that, you know, the decision could be subject to a successful challenge. So it's easy to cure it, but you all need to be aware of these issues as they come up. And, and the same thing with the drive by site visit. So, you know, if you're in the middle of an application and even you're not, you know, during public comment, you know, there's some back and forth and questioning with some members, you know, of the public about what's what. And you as a board member say, well, I drove by the site, you know, and I observed X. I mean, you need to, as, as long as that happened during, you know, while public comment is still being allowed, A, you've, you as the board member have informed your fellow board members that, you know, you're relying on that piece of information. But also you're allowing the applicant and the opposing neighbors to respond to it. But if you do that after the public hearing is closed, then again, there's the risk of a successful challenge to the board's decision. So.
So I had a question about things that, that we get sent to us sometimes by staff right before a meeting, like an email from a, a member of the public who's not able to attend. And we get it often in printed out form. Is that something that is available to the, may be available to the public? Like is, or is this like, for us, for us to be able to use it, or wouldn't they have to have access to it?
Yeah, and I would like some, some guidance from Sally on that. But if we receive emailed public comment, then we would bring a paper copy. If we receive it early enough, then we can post it as part of the packet so everybody can see it ahead of time. But if it's received late, we do still try to provide that to the board.
How does that get shared with the public?
They could have a copy of it at the meeting, but it is limited access to somebody who shows up at the meeting.
Meaning it's put on, copies are made and they're put on the table by the entrance or?
Generally, yep.
And does somebody, whether it's the chair or staff member say, oh, by the way, you know, you know, while everybody has, still has an opportunity to respond to it. You say, you know, oh, Mr. Chair, you know, this afternoon at four thirty-five, we received an email from so and so about, summarize, and, and copies are available by the door. Is that, so is that sort of, everybody put on notice that that correspondence has been received?
Probably not as complete as that, but the recognition that we received comment from the person is, is, we try to make sure that's mentioned.
And similarly to like changes in the packet, like if sometimes there's a, there's a map update or something that's changed, but it's different from what was put up in the public. But if it's, if it's referenced in the meeting that there's a change and the copy is available to all the people in the public, that could be used during that meeting, like without having to do more public notice.
Right.
As long as there's a copy available to everybody there.
As long as it's available and.
Or available online.
And you do it at a point when the public still has an opportunity to respond to it. Like, as I said, my example of, if you have closed the public hearing and you need your deliberations and, you know, Riley, you bring up some, or, you know, Tim's example about his Google map and, and, you know, nobody has a chance to respond to that.
So sometimes there's like a, there's questions about like, there's, what's the public gets in time for the meeting. Like when the maps change, for instance, they, people have said that there needs to be public notice about the change. But if we reference the change and like a small change in a packet and make the new packet available online and available in print, as long as it's available to everyone before we do any deliberation, it would still be.
I guess if, when you say map, I don't know, is this a map as relates to a zoning ordinance amendment? Or is this a map about a site plan application? Because there might be a difference in my response.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but my sense is if we have identified a deficiency on a site plan application, we've asked the applicant to respond to it. Sometimes they're preventing, presenting a revised plan at the meeting with the response to those changes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
So if that's available to everyone at that meeting, you don't have to do another two week public notice. So just everyone has to have access to it.
Right. Everyone, yes. You need to make copies available, whether it's up on the screen or hard copies. But it'd be a different story if there were, if some, a public hearing has been scheduled on some proposed zoning ordinance map amendments and at, on the night of the meeting, that somebody, whether it's staff or, you know, say it's an applicant, is bringing in a new map. Because that, I would say, you would need to start over. Start the process over.
Sorry. Back to the emails. So I guess part of my concern with getting emails from the public for public comment is that it may not be accessible to everybody. I may have not had a chance to like fully sit down and read it before the meeting. And what if it was over five minutes? That email gives a person more potential time to plead their case or state their statements more than somebody that is coming to the meeting and given their five minutes of at the podium time. So what happens with that?
Well, again, first of all, if you are getting an email, hopefully there's some process in place where those get forwarded to city staff, planning.
Well, yeah. So it's from, if like an applicant, if somebody in the neighborhood will say, I'm not able to attend the meeting, but here are my comments on agenda A. And they send it to Catherine. Catherine's really good. She says, here's public comment about meeting A for this evening at six o'clock. See you all there.
And are those comments in the packet or are these arriving after the packet's already been distributed?
Usually if we, sorry. If I'm sending it in that manner, like it's typically after the packets have been distributed. It's, it happens quite frequently that if it's.
Because people send them late.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Maybe they're thinking about it the day of and they're like, oh, shoot, I forgot about this meeting. I want to have comment. If we get them early enough, I'll add them to the packet, but that doesn't always happen.
Yeah. Then again, it's back to, I think the staff needs to do, make sure that if there are comments that are, have been received from the public after the packet's been distributed, that that is made known to everybody in the room, that we receive comment. And I guess Amanda, to your question about, does that mean that somebody can both submit something in writing, you know, some five page, you know, advocacy piece on why this application should or should not be granted? And then they get up and also get five minutes to speak. That's up for, for you all to decide. I, I, I think most planning boards, you know, they don't, they don't say you can only comment once. And, you know, I think obviously some comments in writing can be quite effective. And some comments orally can be quite ineffective and vice versa. So, you know, it's sort of, and some people aren't comfortable speaking in public, so they much prefer to do, submit comments, you know, in writing. But I don't, unless you have some rule that, you know, if you submit comments in writing, you're not allowed to also speak at the meeting. I would say, yeah, somebody's gotten, you know, five pages of written advocacy and as well as, you know, five minutes oral advocacy. And absent some rule that prohibits that, I'd say that's fine, you know.
Yeah. No. So I'm not saying that they're getting two, that they're speaking and they're writing. But just the writing coming in, I just feel like either not, it's not being reviewed. Like for me personally, sometimes I am not able to.
Yeah.
Read through the full email or if there's six emails, I didn't have a chance to get to all of them. So some of the board members may have a little bit more information than I do. But then also some of the emails can be pretty lengthy and exceed the time that you would come up and speak. So that, in my opinion, is unfair.
And I guess it's really up to, you know, the board, you know, you can set your sort of procedures. Do you want to have a cutoff point for, you know, receipt of written comment? And that, you know, that the board, if it doesn't receive comment until, you know, past X hour, that, you know, the board's not going to consider it. You know, but, and that's something I think the board can discuss. But you need to, you need to adopt that rule and then you'd need, need to make it widely known for folks. I just know a lot of times, some folks don't know about an application until the last minute. And so yes, they are coming in sort of last minute. But I also see the other side for you as board members, you've got lives as well. And you're not, you know, spending the two hours before the start of every planning board meeting, you know, reviewing everything that came in that afternoon. You just, that's just not practical. So I think it's really for the board to figure out, do you want to have some cutoff on when you are going to receive written comment on an application? And then, you know, it's not going to preclude somebody from coming and talking at the meeting in person. But you, if, if you are going to have a cutoff, you need to make that well known. Because there are legitimately some people who can't come in person. And so you need to tell them what the deadline is for submitting written comment.
Would you, Sally, would you document that in the, you know, the policies and procedures manual?
You have, yeah, yeah, your written policies and procedures, the most current draft is in the written materials.
But that would be, you know, the planning board is supposed to be reviewing that yearly. So that would be something that we would address then, is that?
I, I think you want to have it, you know, codify it in your planning board policies and procedures. They start on page eleven. But you also need to advertise that, you know, on the website and, you know, on application forms.
In the public notice or?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
The public hearing notice, the agenda item, all, as much notice as possible, if that's going to be the rule. Because A, it's going to be a change and B, I mean legitimately, there are some folks that can't come in person. So.
But I think, I think we're hitting on a good point. I think some of our process is not 100% when it's the last minute. And then it also creates, you know, a little bit of stress for, for staff. And then also for, for our planning board members to deliver, you know, to absorb the information and to be, you know, if everybody is to be having the same equal standing in information, sometimes it's hard to, to get that stance from each member when you can't control what they have going on prior to attending the planning board meeting. So I think it's a good point.
Amanda brings up a really good point where we give people who, who orate their comment a five minute time limit. But written comments, you know, we don't have a limit on those. So she's right in bringing up the point that if someone opts to write something in, they could actually get more clock time to express their feelings. I, splitting hairs, some people might call it that, but I, I see her point and it's valid.
I mean, it's very clear.
But, yeah. But to clarify, we do have the authority, if I heard you correctly, to limit when written responses for agenda items can be accepted. And we also have the authority to limit the length of written.
I, I would not start limiting the length, quite frankly. Yeah. It just, it's going to be too hard to police, quite frankly, and this seems impractical. And some people can use large font and some can use, you know, you know, six point font. And, you know, if you have, whatever page limit you impose, you're going to have people that are right on the edge of trying. I, I wouldn't bother with that, but I think the time cutoff is a legitimate, you know, issue of, you know, things coming in at four o'clock on the afternoon and you just, as planning board, you don't, you, you, you can't be expected to spend the, you know, time right before the planning board meeting to read all these comments and digest them.
Yeah. John's absolutely right because it, it brings up, it's stress on staff, it's stress on us. And then there, during public comment, we get, we have and can get a lot of comment on, well, you can't, that wasn't, that wasn't given the timeframes, I think touching on what Riley was talking about of notice timeframes for changes or for communications. And yeah, I totally agree. We're touching on something that needs some refinement.
Auto apply, not just to the public, to the applicants as well. Because I, I know there's nothing worse than the applicant coming in with a whole new plan set on the night of the planning board meeting. So, I mean, this is going to be, whatever rule you decide on, you're going to want to work with staff and so you can give staff, sort of empower staff to let all the applicants know as well. Because I've seen it all too many times where, you know, the engineering firm comes in, oh, by the way, we had Steph comments and we've got a whole new plan set for you here. And you're just, you know, that's unfair to you as board members.
We, we've struggled with that, printing off emails at four thirty, five o'clock while we're trying to get upstairs to get the room set up. And sometimes gone back to our desk after a meeting and seen comments that came in later than that. Are you seeing like twenty-four hours or noon the day of the hearing in other communities as considered reasonable? Or do you have any suggestions or could you?
I would say sometime in the, you know, I mean, it's really going to be on staff. But, because staff has to get it and distribute them and make copies to be made available, you know, at the meeting. And then you also have your planning board members who have other things that they do besides just serve on the planning board. And so, I mean, I would, you know, maybe, you know, a noon deadline or, you know, nine AM deadline on the day of. The night, you know, four o'clock the day before.
It, for me, it has to be the day before because I'm now, I'm going to school, leaving school, coming here.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm sorry. I had a question. You had talked about site visits. So I had studied our policies and procedures before today. On page thirteen of your packet, it's Article Five, Section F. It says that we are encouraged to visit the site of the application. So maybe we should consider amending that the next time we look at these policies and procedures. I'm not sure if that was discussed last year or not, but it's just something I noticed. It's on page thirteen of this packet and it's Section F, second paragraph down.
I'm just, there. The, there are some proposed amendments to.
Article Five, Section F, to be exact.
Okay.
Yeah. I realized that could be one of the proposed amendments. It's just something I noticed.
And it is. And staff realized during this discussion that the proposed amendments from last year went to four or five planning board meetings that ended after nine o'clock without getting to the end of the agenda and we never adopted the amendments, but that is one of them.
And there's a proposed amendment to that section that changes it from are encouraged to are prohibited. So just good catch, but we, we've thought of it.
We'll be bringing those in February or March to get the new ones adopted to the board.
Little housekeeping still to be done. So, and, and quite frankly, as a result of tonight's discussion, it may be that, I mean, because there were some proposed amendments to your policies drafted up sort of last winter. But maybe as a result of tonight's discussion, there are some even further additional changes that we can maybe present as well. Just.
Sorry. I had another question. You talked about communication with staff. I'm curious about our limitations because I don't want to break the rules, but I also want to make sure that the meeting goes as planned, I guess. But, so if I see something that, you know, in an application, you know, this is missing or I don't see this or I think we have an issue here, do I have to wait to the meeting to, to address that with staff? Or is there, or can I email them and say, hey, do they have an entrance permit? Could you, could you print that off and put that in the packet too? I mean, am I limited from doing that ahead of the meeting?
I think if it relates to, you know, the information that, you know, should or should not be available to all planning board members, that's fine. But if you wanted to email Eric and say, oh, I see they have a traffic movement permit and I have the following questions about the traffic movement permit and please respond to me before Tuesday night's meeting, I would say that that, Eric should, quite frankly, ignore that request up until the planning board meeting. And then. up until the planning board meeting, and then indicate to the full board that, you know, he's received a, a request, you know, a inquiry from one of the planning board members, and sort of then reads your request, and then provides the answer to everybody at the same time in the room. Getting the theme here, right, of everybody's getting the same information.
And is that acceptable? Because it really helps staff to anticipate some of the questions that we will be expected to answer at the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's okay if you have questions, but you as planning board members shouldn't expect a response, I guess is the point. I mean, you can send all the questions you want, but then, but it's two things. Number one, planning board members, you shouldn't expect a response. But number two, you as staff members need to make it very clear to everybody in the room at the planning board meeting, what questions got asked by planning board members. It is not fair to say, you know, to say that, you know, to not indicate that these questions came in from planning board members.
I guess, I guess I'd want a little bit of clarity on that comment. If, if a planning board member is reviewing the packet, and they have, you know, they have a question about the packet, it's not, I don't believe it's a discussion with the whole planning board. You're not sending an email out and notifying the planning board that everybody, you know, there might be something missing, or it could be an, an email directly to staff, but I'm not understanding that it's an open discussion in an email.
That communication between the planning board member and staff is what's known as an expirate communication, whether there's a response or not. Just that, just that one, even that one-way exchange. And those expirate communications are generally to be discouraged, except if the communication is revealed at the planning board member, and everybody gets the same, they, they understand what that inquiry was, and then the answer is given to everybody at the same time.
Correct, but it's not a, it's not a, the whole planning board knows? I mean, is there, is that okay, the plan, the whole planning board?
No, you do not want to, if, you know, Amanda asked the question of John, and then John decides, you, John decided to send it out to every, well, and Amanda asked a really good question. I, I thought it's important that you all know the answer to this, you know, in advance of the meeting. You send that out, and you have inadvertently started an illegal meeting that, you know, there's all this colloquy back and forth. So, you know, you really want to limit the amount of back and forth, even between, you know, staff and planning board members, you know, that's outside of the public meeting. I mean, I know, because I, I've been there, you know, you always, as the lawyer, you know, you want to know what are the issues, you don't want to just be, you know. And so it's helpful to know if board members have questions in advance, but you want to make sure it's, you know, the, the question is raised sort of through the proper channels so that you don't inadvertently engage in unnecessary expirate communications or, you know, unnecessarily and inadvertently create, you know, a public eating, a public meeting via email kind of thing, so. And that can happen when it seems like an innocuous question being asked of staff, but then it gets turned into, you know, staff feels like, oh, I got to let the whole planning board know about this question. And then, you know, that's, you know, gets dicey when you start emailing responses around to all the planning board members, because the applicant doesn't know about it, and the neighbors don't know about it. And, and if that's all happened, and it doesn't get revealed, you know, at the planning board meeting, then, and, you know, there's a subsequent FOA revelation that all that colloquy took place, you know, that can undermine the planning board's ultimate decision.
So the responsibility is on the staff to let the public know there was any direct communication.
And I'm not trying to push any boundaries, I'm just trying to make sure that the communication's appropriate and productive so that I'm not going to the meeting and then kind of hitting them out of nowhere or something, and we can at least get ahead of it, or they can provide that information in the packet or something along those lines. But essentially what you're saying is, I just, we can't have a conversation, is essentially what you're saying.
You can ask a question, but they don't expect a response. It's not going to be a, a two-way back and forth, so.
I just have a quick question. So this is kind of about submitting, submitting comment or suggestion. Sometimes members of the public will submit, say, suggestions for ordinance changes. We've had a lot of ordinance text changes in the last year. We'll get, we'll get suggestions about, like, how that might be amended. Is, can that be accepted in this, is that, should that be accepted in the same manner as public comment? Like, say, sometimes members of the public, and, and board members also, we've had, just submit, and, and we'll discuss it at the meeting, but they'll submit suggestions, like kind of underlined, over-strike suggestions for us to consider, but it's not what was initiated specifically by a council or, or by the public, or by the planning board. But it comes in, like, pretty soon before meetings in some cases?
Is it about, say, zoning ordinance amendments that are either before the council or the planning board, or is it just?
Yep, yep, usually. So say, like, for example, the, the ag zone, we, we did a lot of work on the ag zone. There were a lot of discussions about the amendment changes. And sometimes there were just suggestions that would come in pretty close to the meeting, and it's, and there wasn't a time to address them in the packet, but they're, but, but folks are there at the meeting wanting to discuss them. But it's an amendment, so are you, I, I'm just confused about that.
My view is that you all, everybody ought to be having the same information, even as it relates to zoning ordinance, either text or map amendments. That, that, just, that, that way everyone's going to feel like the process is fair, that everybody knew what was out there for information. And if it's, you know, if it relates to, you know, something that's not currently either before the council or the planning board, you know, somebody has some suggestion about the, I don't know, the gravel pit regulations, and that's not something that's currently sort of on either the planning board or the city council's sort of docket, then obviously, no. But if it's, if the public are commenting on either text or map amendments that are somewhere in between the planning board and the city council, yeah, I think. But again, there's a way, having a cutoff and then making them available. And that is the best way to deal with that. Because this, again, it's unfair to the planning board members to expect them to be spending two hours before every meeting, reading all these last-minute submissions. So if that, if that's what's happening all the time, then there's a way, you know, again, we can address that through your policies. There's a way to, to prevent that from happening going forward, so. Okay, we, I want to talk a little bit about conflicts of interest and bias. And then I'm going to talk a little bit more about this handout. So if you turn to page two of the written materials that have my name on the cover, and this, just so you know, the first five pages of this handout is, is an outline of sort of basic things you ought to be familiar with, governing law, the Freedom of Access Act. And by the way, you all as planning board members are required to have mandatory training on the Freedom of Access Act. And this session is not that. But if you have not had that training, you need to do so. You're supposed to have it, I think, within, I don't know, I think 180 days of seeking office, but I think it'd be sooner, sooner than that is better. And if you've been reappointed, you know, for another term, you need to go again, because the law changes. That's a part why the, the, one of the handouts that's included with the yellow highlighting that starts on page 29. The Freedom of Access Act gets changed pretty regularly. So I don't know who's keeping track of that for you folks. I don't know if it's the city clerk or you, Eric, John, Catherine as staff.
Yeah, we'll have to make sure we're doing better at that. I know some members have been, I don't know if everybody's been.
Okay. Because there are frequently folks who will do audits and come around, they'll go to the, they'll start in the city clerk's office and say, and, and that's a relatively recent change to the Freedom of Access Act to require that, it used to just be sort of the elected officials and the municipal, and the municipal officers. And they've changed it now, and, and the public access officer. They've now made it very clear, planning board members and code enforcement officers all have to have this mandatory training, so. So that's something we should follow up on. So back on the outline that's at the start of the handout, page two is where I really want to dive in a little deeper on conflicts of interest. These are, conflicts of interest are related concepts. But again, back on my theme about you want, as the process to be fair to everybody involved, including applicants, neighbors, fellow board members, staff. Part of that means as you, as a planning board member, ought to be engaging in your role as a planning board member, free of conflicts of interest and bias. Because again, as I indicated at the start, you hold a position of public trust, and you want the public to not be, having, planning board members have conflicts when they're acting on applications that affect people's property rights. So there are, generally speaking, two different tests for conflicts of interest under main law. There's a statutory test, and I've included a copy of the statute in the materials. But the statutory test really is based on a financial interest, whether you have some ownership interest in a particular entity or you have some, I guess, formal role as a officer, director, member, manager of some legal entity. And so the statutory financial test is, is pretty narrow, actually. But the statute also talks about, and I'll show you exactly where it is on the page, let's see, 39 or 40? If you, it's on page 40, under, so this is provision in state statute, Title 30A. All the, most, most all of the statutory provisions about municipalities are in Title 30A. And then 2605 is about conflicts of interest. And you can see sort of about two-thirds of the way down the page, page 40, subsection six, avoidance of appearance of conflict of interest. So this is very much the catch-all provision in, in main statute that says that every municipal official, and you are, as planning board members, you are municipal officials, you're not municipal officers, that's the city council, but you are municipal officials, and you shall attempt to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest by disclosure or by abstention. So that's sort of the catch-all by statute. And there is also, in addition to this statutory test, there is what's called a common law test, or a judge-made law test. And this is the one that, you know, you, you wouldn't sort of know it from the statute, but what decisions of the Maine Supreme Court have repeatedly said is that, in effect, you can't serve two masters, or if you don't like that term, bosses, by serving on the planning board. You, you may have a, you may have a personal interest, but you also have your planning board public interest in being fair to everybody involved in the planning board process. And if those two are going to conflict, then you have, and you're putting, and you can see on, on the outline, page two, it says, if by reason of a board member's interest, that board member is placed in a situation of temptation to serve his, her, its own personal interests to the prejudice of the interests, basically, of the city in you serving as a fair and impartial planning board member, then you have a conflict of interest. So there, there, these conflict of interest situations are very fact-specific. And, you know, we can come up with lots and lots of different examples. But my guidance to you all as board members is, if there's some situation where you think you have a conflict of interest, or there's also this related concept of bias, and that's sort of a predispision, predisposition on either, either in favor or in support of either an application or an applicant. You may not like a particular applicant, but be neutral on the application. But if you have some either conflict of interest or bias situation, you, as the board member, want to be the one to raise it, and raise it early and often. You do not want to, you know, be sitting on a site plan application, and you hear all, you hear the presentation from the applicant, and then you start to hear comment from the public, and somebody from the public raises the issue about, you know, Amanda has a conflict of interest because of X, Y, and Z. And you, Amanda, if you thought there was something that, you know, was an issue as far as a conflict of interest situation or bias, you wanted to, you should be the one to raise it at the start of the agenda item. And, and this is all on page, back on page two of the written materials. The, the procedure is, it's sometimes been, I've seen it referred to as the three-D strategy. D, number one, is discern the conflict of interest or bias situation. Number two, disclose the conflict of interest or bias situation. And number three, disengage from the conflict of interest or bias situation. So that's the three-D strategy, discern, disclose, disengage. And what it, what this gets down to, and again, it's, it's shown on page two, how do you handle these conflict of interests, and the same process applies for bias? You check, you know, any sort of source of law, and that would be your planning board policies and procedures. You, the city has a separate ethics ordinance, which are also included in the written materials, and it's pretty stringent. So those would be sort of the two first places that I would look, you know, to see, is there something right off the bat that, you know, creates a conflict of interest type situation? Then you may even want to just check in with, with staff, because if it's something that might be a little bit dicey, and you want to get advice from my office on, you know, is it a conflict of interest situation? You know, we obviously need to know that well in advance of your Tuesday night meeting. But, but if you have gone through that process, you've at least discerned the, the conflict of interests or, or potential conflict of interest or bias situation, then you want to, at the planning board meeting, at the very start of whatever the effective agenda item is, you want to disclose what the issue. Amanda says, look, the applicant is my former employer. I still do a little bit of consulting work for them, but, you know, and so that, so that's disclosure. And then part of the disclosure is also, it would be Amanda saying, well, but despite that relationship, I still, you know, it's the, my former employer that I now do a little bit of consulting work. It's a humongous company, and I'm, you know, one contractor out of, you know, the 2,000 employee business. And I think I can be fair and, and neutral on this particular application. So you make that disclosure, and then the balance of the planning board will decide whether Amanda can sit on the particular application. There are some situations where the conflict is so blatant, you know, if it's Amanda's husband or her own personal application, then that, that's a situation where it's so obvious that you, you ought to, it's okay to recuse yourself because it's so obvious. But if there's, if it's anything that is not, like, blatantly obvious, you, as the board member, don't say, well, I'm, I'm, I think there's, I have a conflict, so I'm going to just recuse myself. That is not how it works. You got appointed to the Auburn Planning Board to sit and hear on these applications, and you can't duck the tough ones by ginning up either real or perceived conflicts of interest. So you want to keep that in mind. It's again, that you, you identify the, the issue, you disclose it, you state on the record whether you can be fair and impartial, and then you let the balance of the board vote, and the courts will give great deference to whatever it is that the, the planning board decides. But I think there've been, and part of the proposed amendments to your policies related to, I think, a conflict of interest situation that arose, I guess, back in 2022. So, and bias is, is, is related, as I said, that bias is, it's sort of a prejudicial conflict of interest. It's when somebody has a sort of- It's when somebody has a sort of a predisposition either for or against, whether it's an applicant or an application. And, and the bias situation comes up, this is sort of back to Tim and his use of Google Maps. Because if, if somebody were to challenge, and I don't mean to pick on you, Tim, but you gave that, us that example. If Tim were to challenge, Tim's use of Google Maps, you know, maybe, maybe he didn't even do it at the planning board meeting, but he did it, you know, outside of the meeting, and nobody even knew about it, but it was later discovered. What, how that use of, you know, again, I call it extra meeting information. How that would be challenged, you know, Tim's participation would be challenged as a board member by doing that sort of investigative work. It would, he, he would be challenged as having bias because he started to investigate on his own that particular application. That's how the challenge would come forward, most likely, is that you are biased because you were doing your own sort of independent investigation. So that is a huge no-no, and again, just think of it, if, as it's your application, would you want planning board members, whether it's talking, or texting, or calling, or researching things outside of the meeting, stuff you don't know is even happening and that you don't get to respond to? No, that's not fair. And so that's what this is, again, I'm trying to make a very important point here.
I have two quick questions for you, Sally.
Sure.
Would knowing somebody, I mean, we live, it's Auburn, it's a big town, but it's also a small town, would that need to be disclosed?
Oh, thanks. Well, just the fact that you, you're an acquaintance with somebody. I think if you had, if it's your best friend, or it's your mother's best friend, you know, that's the thing, if you're, some of these are.
Like if you go up to someone and be like, hey, how's it, like, I don't know.
Just because you, you, you know, your kids go to the same school, whatever, you know, yeah, that, no. It has to be something more than just, you know, an acquaintance type situation.
Or if it was like a patient, or a person that comes up to you at your, like, place of employment, or does that need to be disclosed?
Again, use your good judgment, but generally speaking, it's something more than just an acquaintance type situation. If it, that may in some, if, might be perceived as somehow affecting your judgment to sit fairly and, and neutrally on an application, then you ought to disclose it. And it, you know, it doesn't need to be a big, long deal, you know, but I think again, err on the side of caution and over-disclosure, then nobody can complain about it later, quite frankly.
And then one other quick question, what if we felt like another board member was being biased? Is that just?
That, I mean, that's tough. I guess you would need, but it is, it is certainly, I, I, again, you know, as I said, you as the board member always wanna raise something. But that doesn't mean that your fellow board members or members of the public can't raise issues about, you know, others on the board. I think you wanna, you need to have some type of, I guess, supporting, you know, evidence, and, you know, could be just an observation. But if you think that's the case, again, you raise the issue and you turn it over to that, you know, you state, you know, what you think the bias situation is. You know, sorry to pick on you, Tim, but you, I sit next to Tim and he's been Google-erthing, you know, this particular site over here, you know, behind the dais and, you know. And, or, or, you know, you can see Tim texting, you know, Eric about something during the meeting, that kind of thing. I think you, you as a board member can raise the issue, and then you say, you know, again, say, I just observed Tim, you know, I can see on his screen, he's, you know, texting Eric, and Eric's, you know, they're having this colloquy back and forth, and they're not sharing that with the rest of us. Then raise the issue, and then, you know, Tim gets to, you know, give his side of the story and say whether, you know, he thinks he's biased or not, and then. And then, again, the balance of the board decides the issue. So, but, and you know, I mean, that's why, sort of, you're doing these training sessions, is if, if you all sort of have good behavior, then hopefully you won't have to be put in that situation. But that's why I think it's helpful to have these discussions about, you know, what are the bounds of what we, you know, can do, should do, type of thing.
I have another, sorry, I'm gonna add to the questions here. So in the past, I've worked in a position where I've hired contractors. So let's say I, I've hired an excavator that I know is the excavator for a site application, or I, I've done business with someone that's coming up. Proceeding that way, first of all, would you consider that a conflict, and would it be sufficient for me to state that and have the rest of the board members vote?
See, I don't have enough facts to know, you know, in that particular situation, you know, what does the excavator have to do with this particular application? But again, my, my caution of, it, it's just disclosure, 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 you can't go wrong with that. So, and then, you know, the rest of the planning board, you'd have to, you know, maybe lay out a little more of the facts and let the rest of the planning board figure out whether, you know, it's a conflict situation.
And I would say, we try to go over what we know is gonna be on the next agenda at a planning board meeting, and if you saw that the developer coming in was the site contractor that you use on your house lots, call us, we'll try to ask the questions we need to have Sally tell us if it's a true conflict or not.
Yep. Okay. One, one thing that comes up is planning board members, and this, I don't know if this is, you know, bias, but it's, I guess, could be viewed as biased. Let's say you as a planning board member, you completely disagree with the way the city council has amended the ordinance as relates to, we'll pick on the ag zones, the uses allowed in the ag zone, okay? And you just, you just have a fundamental policy disagreement with the, the uses that are being allowed in the ag zone, and there, there's an application coming forward with one of those types of uses. So there's a fair question there about, you know, are you, you know, biased as a planning board member if you have a fundamental disagreement with that policy decision? Remember that the policy is set by the city council, the city council's the legislative body, and you as the planning board, you know, administer and implement that policy. If you don't like the policy and you wanna change it, well then, you should be running for city council. But you as a planning board member also just need to be careful about, you, you're allowed to have, you know, personal opinions on lots of issues in the city of Auburn. But if you're gonna take a position, you know, while some zoning ordinance amendments are, are pending in front of, you know, planning board and city council on the uses that are allowed in the ag zone, and you are putting things out, whether it's on social media, you're talking to your neighbors about, I'm really opposed to these ag zone, you know, uses that are pending, you know, in front of us, you know, as the planning board and the city council. I think there's a, a fair question there about whether you can, you know, participate, you know, on any type of application that involves those uses in the ag zone. You may have already sort of predisposed yourself because you don't like that policy, and are you gonna be able to give that applicant a fair shake if you've already, you know, come out, whether it's publicly or privately, you know, as being opposed to that policy that has been set by the city council? So I know it's a hard, you know, path to follow because you do live in town, and lots of these issues do affect you, but you're also, you know, on the planning board, and so you, if you wanna have lots of personal opinions about the zoning ordinance, then you probably shouldn't be sitting on the planning board and hearing applications and hearing amendments. But, so you want to try to, you know, reserve your personal opinions to just your own head while you're on the planning board so that you can participate in these various planning board applications. Otherwise, you're gonna be constantly bumping up against allegations of either conflicts of interest or bias. So, or, so, you know, it's nice that you all wanna serve the city, but you, again, you just have to keep remembering, reminding yourself, you don't make the policy, the city council does. You are implementing the city council's policy, so if you have major disagreements with it, you, you know, and that have been articulated, then you're gonna need to perhaps, you know, be excusing yourself from certain types of either applications or ordinance amendments.
It's probably a good segue for, you know, approval of projects and, and non-approval projects. I think the, I think that's been a, you know, maybe a challenge by the planning board in terms of if they had a negative recommendation in, in the process of doing that, in the, you know, the findings of fact. I think oftentimes, I think that's probably our, can be a big challenge, and the, the process of that, maybe just touching on that for a bit would be, I think would be helpful.
Are you talking about specific applications, or as relates to zoning ordinance text or map amendments?
Site plan review, special exception, site plan review specifically, as it relates to, you know, the current ordinance as it sits.
Well, I'd say, and I, you know, do lots of trainings for both planning boards and boards of appeal, and I guess in Auburn, you're the regulatory advisory board is your, serves as your board of appeals. But anyways, I always tease that if you wanna say yes to applicants, sit, serve on the planning board, if you wanna say no to applicants, serve on the board of appeals, because they mostly get variance, applications, and like ninety-nine percent of the time, folks aren't entitled to them. Generally speaking, you know, the, the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that their application meets all the substantive review criteria. So generally speaking, most applicants are able to do that, but sometimes they aren't. But if the planning board is thinking that an applicant has not demonstrated that their application meets all of the applicable review criteria, then it's incumbent upon the planning board to identify what standard is, has not been met by the applicant, and what specific information supports a finding that the application does not meet that applicable review criteria. Because generally speaking, you know, most of these applicants are pretty sophisticated, and they're, they, generally speaking, will hire, you know, an engineering firm to help them with their applica, you know, architectural firm to help them with their application, and they know how to address all the substantive review criteria. But that being said, sometimes there can be, and we haven't talked about this issue, but, you know, you could have one traffic engineer say an intersection is safe, and you may have a second traffic engineer that says the intersection is not safe. You may have competing expert opinions, but you as the planning board get to make credibility determinations. So you don't, just because somebody comes in as a, a quote expert, because they have some advanced training, whether it be in site evaluation, or traffic studies, or stormwater management, you as the planning board get to make, again, credibility determinations. You may not believe some, you know, applicant's consultant, and you get to, to say, we don't believe, you know, traffic engineer, I won't name any names. But you're allowed to do that. There's a, a court case involving the, when the Hannaford, or was then Shop 'n Save Grocery Store on Forest Avenue in Portland, there's actually a court case from that, there were competing traffic engineering reports, and the Portland Planning Board picked one and not the other, and that's okay. So, just keep that in mind, that you as the planning board get to make credibility determinations. You may not necessarily, you know, you see lots of applications, you see lots of, you know, professionals submit things, and some professionals are better than others. And there may be some, you know, you don't, you know, give a lot of credibility to, but you, that's the thing about being on the planning board is you receive all the evidence, and then you can decide how much of it, you know, to believe, and you can also, you know, how much weight to give it. Because I guess Amanda's example about, you know, the, the five-page letter versus, you know, the two-paragraph letter from a neighbor, it may be that that two-paragraph letter is more convincing than the five-page letter. So you get, that's, you get to determine how much weight to give the five-page letter versus the two-paragraph letter. So Riley, you have a question?
Yeah, well specifically, so I remember this last year about the, you cited the traffic study, so, but just now, I think you may have clarified some of it. So if a traffic study comes to us and there's substance, like part, part of the traffic study that you disagree with, you have to go as far as discrediting the traffic, the person who came up with the traffic study? You can't just say, I disagree with part of the information that they provided, or does there have to be competing information for you to go off of?
I think there's, you have to have some basis for, for why you are not giving credibility, or you're not giving as much weight to that traffic study as opposed to, let's say, the opposing neighbors hire a traffic engineer. It doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to be a competing, uh, study, but you have to have some support for why you're going to either disregard completely or not give a lot of credibility or weight to some particular study. And it can't just be, they, you know, oh, they, they have a typo on page five, okay? You know, there has to be some legitimate.
There's a level of safeness. It was rising to safe, they determined something was safe and I disagreed with it, but it was, it was not based on another study.
Yeah, and I can't really say without having some of the context, but I, I mean, for that, if, if that was gonna be a decision of the planning board as a whole to disregard some traffic engineer's study, then an intersection was safe, I'd say you gotta, you know, you gotta persuade me about what, what specifically you're looking at to disregard that traffic study.
It had been referenced by city staff as a problem corridor before, and so that's why I did, I used that logic to say that it wasn't safe. It wasn't, the existing situation wasn't safe, so that the traffic. It's not of consequence, but I would, I wouldn't have to have some other specific.
I, I think there has to be some legitimate, you know, basis, and, you know, you've started to articulate some there, but, you know, you obviously didn't persuade your fellow board members, but it doesn't mean that, you know, you're not right. But I just, the, and it's helpful to understand as planning board members too, sort of what the, what happens after your decision is made. The, there's an appeal right to Superior Court, and it's called a Rule eighty B appeal, because it's a rule of civil procedure. And the Superior Court will review your decision as far as your legal conclusions, what's called de novo, fresh. They won't give much consideration to, you know, how you interpreted the ordinance. They're gonna, you know, look at the, how the ordinance should be interpreted afresh. But as far as your factual determinations, the court is gonna give great deference to those. So that's why it makes a, a difference about if you're disagreeing, you know, with an expert, is it because of some factual basis? Or is it you, is it some issue of interpretation of law, or the, you know, I don't know, the, it could be the traffic movements standard, and traffic management standards, you know, in state statute, or. Because the court will give deference to your factual findings, but it's not gonna give deference to your legal conclusions. But it, so if you're gonna, you know, disagree with some study that's very fact-based, you know, you're gonna, first of all, have to persuade your fellow board members, but also, you know, it's gonna be hard for, if the, if you are able to persuade your fellow board members about, you know, the water is, does not run, you know, uphill on the site, if that's the case, whatever factual findings the planning board as a whole makes, those are gonna be given deference by the courts. So keep that in mind.
If I could just, staff will provide a recommended set of findings and the list of ordinance sections that we believe apply to a particular application as part of the staff report. If the board doesn't agree with those, and they require a lot of reworking to result in a decision that maybe is the opposite of what staff is recommending, I think it's appropriate for the board to consider giving us what we need for information to draft a new set, table the item, and then bring back a written set for the following meeting.
And you as staff have to hound the planning board to articulate a reason for the denial. I mean, I have seen this quite unfortunately, all too many meetings where, you know. I mean, I have seen this quite unfortunately, all too many meetings where, you know, whether it's a planning board, whatever type of board, they'll, they'll say, you know, they vote against something and they don't, they don't articulate a basis. And without that basis, you're not, you're just setting, you know, the city up for if there is a challenge in court, everyone's going to troop off to court and the first thing the court's going to do is look at the planning board's findings as if some conclusory statement about, you know, didn't meet, you know, criteria X. And the Superior Court's just going to send the matter back to, to you folks to do a better written decision. So you might as well just do it the first time around, save everyone the pain and the expense of going off to court. Yes, Catherine?
Yeah, so another question is, that's related to that is, say there's a set of suggested findings, say that the board decides altogether, like the, the vote to pass a particular project fails, but there's disagreement on which finding doesn't meet the, like say one person thinks that the traffic isn't safe, one person thinks-
You, perfect segue to a very important point. You have in your written materials, there's one court case, if I can find it here, it is on page 61.
Sorry, before we pivot, can I go off of Riley's question really quick?
Sure.
The appropriate action, if you're going to question an expert, would it be appropriate to table the item and allow the applicant to provide the burden of proof for like a, another review from another traffic engineer to confirm or deny? Would that be an appropriate action or would you, are you just saying, you just gotta hash it out right there?
I, I guess that raises a segue to another important point and that is-
If you want to continue your current segue, we can come back to mine, but I just, I thought while we're on the topic, I would just bring it up.
You'll see, uh, it's on our, the outline in the written materials, let's see, it's on page three under Article Six, Meeting Conduct, and it's six H. Take adequate time to make a decision and that includes, if you need, as the planning board, want some extra information from the applicant that you don't have and you think is important to inform your ultimate decision, then you ought to, instead of denying it, you ought to postpone, and we'll talk about, because somebody, I guess David had a question about postpone versus table, what that means. Was, or was it you, Paul?
No, I was going to ask that.
Okay, okay. So, you know, every developer applicant wants their approval yesterday, you've heard me say that a million times and you've experienced it, but it is so much better again for having good decision-making to take the time to get it right. And whether getting it right is getting an additional piece of information from the applicant or it means having some peer review done of some aspect of a particular application at the applicant's expense, that's a possibility. You probably don't do that enough. If it's, you have some question about how the ordinance should be interpreted and you need, you know, advice from me, you, you postpone the application to a date certain to get that additional information. And that is perfectly appropriate. You're gonna, you know, the applicants hate it, but it doesn't make sense to rush to get something done just because the applicant is hounding you to get it done because you want to get it done right. It's, it's not a matter of getting it done, you know, in the fastest manner possible. You want to get it done right and sometimes that takes time. And so to the extent, you know, Riley, you had some question about the traffic study. Maybe it was appropriate for you to say, you know, to your fellow board members, I have an issue with this traffic study, does it make sense to have a peer review of this traffic study? And see if you can persuade your fellow board members to go along with that. And, and that is possible, as I say, you probably don't do that enough.
We'll typically do that for a project that generates 100 trip hour peaks or more if we're issuing a traffic movement permit and our city engineers will do that for more complicated stormwater permits, but not usually in other circumstances.
Yeah, yeah. But it, but it is available, so, you know, don't be shy about at least raising the issue. So back to Catherine's point about if the planning board is, you know, deliberating and is identifying different issues with an application that they don't, you know, think the application meets various approval criteria, that raises a question about how do you vote on site plan and special exception and subdivision applications? Is it just a motion to approve or do you go through the review criteria? Because when I was pointing you to page 61 of the written materials, it's a court case, wide waters, still water versus the Bangor area citizens for responsible development. And what this court case, the point of it, why included in the training materials, it's from over 20 years ago, but it is still good law, is, and especially when you have a seven-member planning board, if you just vote up or down on an application, you know, through different sort of permutations and combinations, there may be a majority of, of planning board members that if you just vote up or down on application, they will not support approving the site plan application, for example. But if you went through each of the applicable review criteria and did individual votes, it could be that the applicant meets all of the applicable review criteria. And so what this court case says is that's what yours, you as, you know, planning boards applying a set of review criteria, you're supposed to go through the individual review criteria and have a separate vote on each of them for just that reason that, in that it could be that an application has a majority vote, that it meets each of the applicable review criteria, but because of different members disagree or not, you know, thinking that the application meets certain standards, through certain, some certain voting combinations, it might look like if you took just a straight up, whether, motion to approve the application, it could look like the application fails. So if you read through that court case, you'll see, you know, this may sound a little esoteric for you right now, but if you read through that court case, you'll see, you know, why that's a good practice. And, and I know, I can hear the, and I can see the darts from John, Eric and Catherine about, there's no, and you all as well, we no way, we don't want to vote individually on all those criteria. If you have an application where there, you know, it's not, there are some, you know, disagreements about whether the application meets all the applicable review criteria, I think the only solution to that is you need to go through each of the individual review criteria. Because there's no other way you can have written findings if you don't do that exercise. And, so, because it could be, you know, again, three different issues that got raised by three different planning board members, but there's still a majority vote on each of those three criteria that the applicant has met that criteria. So it, it would not make sense to have an, you know, up or down vote because the, that might, or I guess, I get my example, say you have four criteria that, you know, various planning board members don't think are met, then, then it could look like the application, you know, isn't approved when there could have been a majority vote on each of those applicable review criteria. So, does, does that make sense? Do you understand where?
So that brings me to the question that I kind of have wrote down. So I've noticed in the past year that a lot of the public comment that we have is to deny an application. And we have deliberated over time hours on certain topics, on certain applications that were presented to us as a board. Should we have pulled up in front of us the things to, that we would have to say that should deny this application? So it's just very easy to say, yes, this application meets all standards or no, it does not based on option three? Just to kind of have the meeting have a better flow or so there's less conflict or drama?
I think, I guess I defer to staff on the answer to that question because I, if every single application is controversial and there's a risk that, you know, every single application might get denied, then I guess what you probably ought to need to do is deliberate on an application and then before you actually vote, let staff go and draw up a proposed set of findings based on those deliberations. They hopefully are getting the gist of where you're all at and not vote that night because until the staff has, has time to come back with a written decision that matches the planning board's deliberations. Otherwise, I mean, the other alternative is to have staff come to every single meeting where these are the findings, you know, of yes and these are the, on the, you know, to approve the application and these are the findings to no, but the, the staff is, they're not mind readers and they might not know, I mean, quite frankly, until the night of the meeting, where a majority of the planning board is as far as what standards may not be met. But the thing about, if you vote on the same night that you deliberate, it doesn't give the staff sort of time to do a written, you know, findings, they just don't have time to do it on the fly with information they've just gained that night. So, go ahead, Paul.
So this has happened many times and we get into that dilemma of whether to, is it, is it tabling or postponing? Are they the same thing?
Officially, to table means to, like, delay it on your, that meeting agenda, to like later that meeting, okay? That's what a tabling is. You put it on the table, you set it aside for that meeting. But notwithstanding that fact, and then postpone, you all, there are two different types of postponement. There's postpone to a date certain, which is, it could be, you know, your next meeting or, you know, to June, you know, 2024 or postpone until the applicant submits further information. So that's, you know, a date certain, but not based on an event happening, but not a specific calendar date. Those are all postpone to a date certain. If something is postponed indefinitely, that, under formal rules of procedure, that kills the item like dead. So it's like voting no on it, but without having a whole lot of discussion and debate. So if somebody makes a motion to postpone indefinitely, that, you know, basically kills it without having to go through all the merits of the application review criteria and everything like that. And that is, should not be happening at planning board meetings, quite frankly. But just that, those are the, those are the procedural terms, but I will say, or the parliamentary terms, everyone, I mean, I even do it too. We talk about tabling something because everybody understand, everybody sort of understands that as you're delaying it, you know, to, whether it's, it's typically not at that same meeting, it's typically, you know, the next meeting or two meetings later, but people just use it perhaps incorrectly if you're being a real, you know, fussy about parliamentary procedure, but people talk about tabling things, but it really should be postponed to a date certain, so. Okay. It's quarter of eight. I just want to go really quickly through the second handout that I gave you because I think it does a really good job and that's why I did not try and reinvent the wheel. You can see this is a PowerPoint presentation on, at the conference of the Colorado Municipal League 2022 on land use liability and the basics of quasi judicial decision making. It was actually geared toward elected officials, because this comes up a lot, you know, with city councils, town councils, the, you know, they do, they see lots of different types of applications. They, and sometimes they're sitting in their legislative mode where they're, you know, adopting ordinance amendments or amendments or actual new ordinances, but sometimes they're hearing, for example, liquor licensing applications or taxi cab license applications. And, and so in those instances, they're sitting in a quasi judicial capacity and because they're elected officials, they have a really, really hard time putting on their quasi judicial capacity hat because they're so used to, you know, talking to constituents and doing constituent service and, you know, emailing, you know, about things that are on council agendas. And then when they get these licensing applications, which where all that kind of ex-party communications have, it's a total no-no, they, they get confused or forget about it and it can lead to trouble. So anyways, this PowerPoint was geared towards elected officials. So at the beginning, there's a little bit about the legislative role, but I think it does a really good job of identifying my whole theme that I've been perhaps beating you over the head with about fundamental fairness. And that's all rooted in the federal and state constitution about the due process clause that, you know, everybody should get a fair shake and they should have fair and impartial decision makers, that's you as the planning board members, and everybody should be making the decision based on the same information. And so this PowerPoint does a good job talking about, you know, if you turn to, I guess it's on the, the seventh page because it's double sided, rules of engagement, personal conduct, you know, what are some of the key rules of engagement related to your own conduct? You know, don't make up your mind before the hearing, you know, don't make presidential, prejudicial pre-hearing statements. There's just a lot of really good stuff in here and it talks about, you know, how to run a good hearing and what are sort of some of the best practices. And you can see, they say, this is on the next page, page nine, use a script and follow it, you know? Don't be ad hoc. So I feel vindicated that these are things I've been preaching for years and years and others agree. They also, the next slide topic is about avoid ex parte communications, you know, so there's a lot of just examples about what's good and, and not so good behavior. But I, then you keep going and there's some information about deliberations matter and I think this sort of goes to some of the most recent questions you all have been posing about, you know, when you're struggling with an application, you know, what are you supposed to be doing? You know, you have to formulate the basis for your decision and, you know, you have to be able to articulate it to, you know, the applicant and the public because if there is a challenge, the, everybody needs to know what was the basis for your decision. It can't just be, you know, I didn't, I didn't like this application, that's not good enough. If you look on, there's a slide that's, it's sort of towards the end about deliberations matter, the rule of why in action. And so they have a little role play and I think this is, I just, this is to a T, you know, the, the mayor, the presiding officer says, I'd like to thank everyone for their comments on this development plan, now it's time for the board to deliberate. Who would like to start? So board member Sam says, I would, thank you. I think we've heard a lot of differing opinions here and I just want to say I'm adamantly opposed, I just don't like it and I'm voting no. So another board member, Tammy says, Sam, may I ask, why do you intend to vote no? And then Sam says, I'm voting no because it doesn't meet our standards. And so another board member, Nile says, Sam, why doesn't it meet our standards? I have concerns too, but if you tell us what standards concern you and why you think they aren't met, that will help frame our discussion. So that's, you guys need to keep asking why, okay? Why, 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 why? You know, if you don't think it meets the standards, why? So I don't mean to pick on you Riley, but that's sort of, you know, what, what it comes down to, why? What was, what, you know, you have to articulate what it was about that traffic study that you didn't find convincing, so.
So you're really empowering me and I'm sure Riley in this case too, but with, well, it just, I don't always know what's okay to ask or, it sounds like postponing is a good idea.
It can be, absolutely.
Because we get so much information at some of these and a lot of it's new from the public and it's, and it starts spinning around and then it's two hours of hearing stuff and it's like, maybe we need to just postpone this and think about it some more and move on to the next item so we can get more information.
The applicants will not like it, but once you start doing it and you make it clear that if you as an applicant don't have all your ducks in a row, that your application's going to be postponed, you'll, you'll start seeing better applications, I guarantee it. I mean, that's just, you know.
And you can certainly outline for staff what you feel you're missing for information and we can take that time to make sure we either get it from the applicant or get it from wherever it's available.
All right. We're 10 minutes early perhaps, but just to, to wrap up, I, I think I heard- We're 10 minutes early perhaps, but just to wrap up, I think I heard, and maybe Eric and Catherine and John, you can chime in, that maybe some of the things that you might like to see is some changes either to your official policies and procedures or maybe just sort of in general practicalities, maybe having a set of opening remarks that you work on that can be at least referenced by the chair and made available at all of your meetings. So if you don't want to, it's sort of a compromise between reading the whole full set, but, but you'd probably need to, you'd want to work on what you want those opening remarks to say. So I identified that as one issue. And then a second issue is this issue of sort of late, you know, comments from the public. And I think I heard maybe at least some discussion, if not consensus on, you'd maybe like to set a deadline of 24 hours before, maybe six o'clock on the day before, so that that gives planning staff time to, whether they're going to send it out to the planning board members and the applicant and, or just make it available at the meeting? I mean, is that...
Well, I think it needs to be like noon business hours kind of thing so that you can send something out so that board member can get it 24 hours before, do you know what I mean? So I can actually read it the night before.
So the cutoff will be noon on the day before, so Monday noon for a Tuesday meeting?
It would be like...
Tuesday meeting?
Because that wouldn't necessarily give enough...
But it gives them time to prepare or get it to us.
I would think staff would be at home at 6:00 PM the day before, I think is what you're getting at, right?
Right. So noon, noon on Monday would be the cutoff?
So you, you have 24 hours to review it after staff receives it.
And you have a couple hours to send it out between lunch and going home.
And we could potentially post it to the website at that point.
So what if there's a Monday holiday?
Oh, come on.
Sorry, that's just, it's my line of work.
The good news is staff gets time and a half on those days, so.
Is that the Friday before?
I'm just wondering how we would communicate that, I guess, to the public effectively that it's, we could be clear in the policy.
If it's listed on our policies and procedures, then it is what it is.
We could reference the city holidays and the procedures.
I think you're going to want to have this be not just in your policies and procedures, I think you're going to want to have it on your website, you're going to have it on every single application form and, you know, have it at every single planning board meeting about, you know, if you want to submit written comments on anything, here's the deadline to so it's widely dispersed.
And this is helpful for us to draft something that then when we bring that draft in front of you, we can have some of that shallow. So noon Monday, day before the meeting, to be distributed to the planning board by close of business Monday.
I would say noon, sorry, noon, the immediately preceding...
Business day.
Business day, yeah. So that kind of discounts the holiday. It would be that Friday before.
Yep.
Okay. And then the other, oh, the third thing, and this is maybe just for follow up, is about the FOIA training, if you guys haven't had it. Is there anything else that I have? Those are the three things that I heard.
So should we, should we contact you if we're, I just got reappointed, so I need to take the Freedom of Information Act training?
So yeah, let us, Jackie and I will work together to check for the last attendance that we have for May Municipal and FOIA. And I think with the new appointments, the new seats or reappointments, most people are up for it anyways, so.
And is that something where, isn't there a form you can fill out that you studied this page of information and then you can sign it saying, I've studied this thoroughly instead of attending the whole FOIA class?
You can do it online and there is a form and Sue, the city clerk, should have that form, but if she doesn't, you guys, I have it, so you guys...
You have to pass it into her too after you've completed it. There's like a certificate or whatever.
Yeah. But, but sort of planning staff should be on top of making sure the planning board members do the requisite training.
I think pretty much everybody's going to be up for a new set of training with the reappointments or new seats that we have, so.
Yeah. Yeah, May Municipal Association occasionally does have these trainings, but I think you've missed the, may have missed the window.
Yeah, some, some board members have been to those, so.
Okay, okay. Okay, well, thank you all for being a very engaging audience. Hopefully I answered all your questions, but if you have more, just get them to Eric, John, Catherine, and Jackie and we'll get you an answer.
I, you answered most of my questions, but I have like one or two stragglers. Can I just tack those on right here? Is that fine?
Sure.
Sorry, everyone, I just, I wrote down like 14 questions and she answered like 12 of them, so.
You did pretty well then, huh?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. It was super thorough, thank you. One of them I had was about participation in council meetings. So I remember like a year ago, we had like a council person come to a planning board meeting and make comment. And I think they're under different rules than us. So like if there's an issue that is pertaining to planning board, are we allowed to also comment at council or should we abstain from anything planning board related?
You do so at your peril, because if you comment on something that's before the planning board, you may have just knocked yourself out of being able to consider whatever that issue is as a planning board member. So if you want to go and participate as an individual, that's fine, but understand, again, depending on the specific factual circumstances, if you, you know, again, go and say you're opposed to certain uses in the ag zone and then you turn around and want to sit on the planning board, you know, hearing those proposed zoning ordinance amendments, I would say you already sort of knocked yourself out of considering, considering those zoning ordinance amendments.
Okay. And my only other question was bringing forth ideas for ordinances. What's the proper order for that? Because I've heard different rules. Do you need so many people to agree with the idea to put it on agenda, you know, when do you bring it up sort of thing? Because I just, I've been to plenty of Auburn planning board meetings, I've just never really seen it brought up.
I'd say the zoning ordinance says that the planning board can bring forward ordinances as the, and the city council can do them on their own initiative, but quite frankly, they're oftentimes, and then there are also a procedure for a petition under the zoning ordinance, but the practical reality is there can be lots of different sources for zoning ordinance amendments. And I would say if you have particular ideas, it's probably something that the planning board ought to be considering, you know, maybe as a workshop item. I know a lot of communities, they'll keep sort of a running list of, you know, housekeeping items and some of that sometimes is, you know, morphs into more substantive issues, but that seems to me like, and I don't know what your process is for, for getting items on a workshop agenda from individual planning board members, but I'll let Eric.
Yeah, we, we have a miscellaneous section at the end of our meeting where we will try to give you updates on upcoming items. It's also a chance for a board member to kind of gauge interest about something they've been thinking about with the rest of the board and see if it should be put on a future agenda. But that's ultimately the whole board, for the board to initiate an amendment, a majority of the board has to vote to do that. But that miscellaneous item section is a good chance to say, hey, this is a problem, you know, is this something the rest of the board would want to put on a future agenda for a workshop?
Okay, thank you. That was my straggling questions.
Okay, great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
All right, one minute early.
Meeting is adjourned.
We'll see less than two hours on the, on the bill.
I got to travel, buddy.
There's a lot of travel, especially in the winter when we get back.
Last, last Wednesday night, when it was like that freezing rain, I had to go on the Mickey Mouse, and driving home, it was awful.
I heard a lot of people...
Oh, my God. It was just like...